Mine's on.
Read the fine print.
Now I can't tell any dirty secrets until I turn it off.
Read the fine print.
Okay.
There, is it on?
Call the meeting to order, please. All right.
Roll call. Trustee Loftus.
Here.
Trustee Williamson. Trustee Hakes.
Present.
Trustee Cisco Smith. And Paula De Bell is not here. We'll let the record show.
Yet, hopefully, yet.
Thank you so much.
What happened to my glasses?
I would like to move for approval of the minutes if there are no questions.
Some moved second.
It's been moved in second.
All right.
That the minutes from August 24th be approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, well, we have no oppositions. Approval of invoices. I think you all have seen those.
Adrienne, that's you.
I'm sorry, I'm looking for my glasses. All right. Move for approval of the invoices dated August 24th, 2020 through September 22nd, and open purchase orders as shown on the attached list dated September 22nd, 2020. For approval.
Second.
All right, and the amount of $31,645, you have that, yes?
Yes.
We are approved.
Whatever it was.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Consideration of the financial report.
So that's item 1C. And we will start with looking at the department summary by program. And at this point of the year, we should be 16.7% spent. And we are at 10% spent. And the bulk of that would be hourly extra help salary savings for the months of July and August when the library was not open. So we are well within our budget.
Good.
And at the library books and materials, we should again be at 16.7. We're at 9.8. We do not traditionally spend very much money during July and August. There's a lot of programming and things are going on. And so you will see that that will get ramped up throughout the year. And we don't ever have a problem spending our book budget. So I'm not worried about that.
No.
Any questions on those two items?
No, but despite not having spent much money on the books, there's lots of new books on the shelves.
Yes.
It's really nice to see.
Very good.
How did you see the shelves?
I beg your pardon?
The bookshelf in the center of the, I don't go upstairs unless I'm going to a meeting.
Okay, we will move on to item 1D, please. Consideration of the circulation statistical report.
Okay, so this would be, the front page is a review of August 2020. You'll see that we circulated through home delivery 5,700 items and did 1,585 deliveries during the month of August. If you turn to the first page after that overview, you can see that between July and August, things were very steady where it came to eresources, the use of Hoopla and Overdrive. And we had put extra funding into those resources during the time that we were closed. You can see that it's more than doubled from August of last year, the usage of that.
Yes.
And then that Civic Center number of 7,650 is a combination of home delivery and curbside delivery. So for the month of August, while we were doing curbside, about 3,000 items were circulated in that fashion.
Wow.
That's great.
That's incredible. That's incredible.
So those were the highlights that I was bringing to you. If you have any questions about that or anything on that report, let me know.
I even think the customer service desk is quite.
So that is, that's the telephone, that's the phone center?
Yeah.
That Ms. Sherri Noel had been the primary person
Yeah.
handling that and doing a lot to help people that either didn't have a computer or were struggling to use the catalog to get things put on hold and even registering them for home delivery. And she's done a great job.
Yes, it's terrific. I mean, you look from last August, of course, we weren't in this situation, but even from July.
Yes.
Just very, very much appreciated. Very good. Okay.
She just can't say no.
We seem to be, thank you Sherri Noel. Mink Plus is doing well?
Yes, and you know, I think that's just going to take some time
Yeah.
for that to reestablish itself. It's only been, you know, back in service the month of August. We'll compare and see how September goes.
Yeah.
And as people, you know, are hearing that the library's reopening and coming in, I think we'll see those services ramp back up.
Very good. Any other comments or anyone want to note?
Just very happy to be able to go into the library.
I haven't done that yet.
I wanted to ask about the library cards. I know there was some discussion about the possibility of expanding beyond Oceanside and.
Oh, for the students?
For the, uh-huh. And I remember we talked a little bit about that last time. I know if there was.
So that's something that we are definitely interested in doing. It's going to take some funding, about $15,000 to do that. And so once we could identify some funding for that, then that is, you know, definitely something that we could make happen. And I know some contact has been made with the people at the Vista School District and even Fallbrook and Bonzel. I believe Bill had some contacts that he shared with Marie. So we can kind of get those things lined up and then, and then see where we might find some funds for that.
All right. At this point, there wouldn't be anything from the city, anything more?
I've not asked.
Approached them yet, okay.
I've not asked, but that's always a possibility or maybe a Friends Foundation
Yes.
sponsored share or something. I don't, I don't know. Well, we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Excuse me. All right, thank you. And welcome back.
Thank you.
Healthy, too.
Thank you. 1E.
Okay, so that is our program statistics. And all of our programming has either been done through a streaming platform or via Zoom. And you can see the list there. And even during the time of closure, we have either maintained or in some ways added a few things. We've seen a few book clubs with
Excuse me.
added participation. And so that's been nice. One that's been very popular that was started was the book club for the six, seven, eight-year-olds. I can't imagine them on a Zoom call, but you know, bless.
I agree.
Bless Aaron's heart for doing it. And it's been quite popular. And so that would be, that's number 24 there, the Young Readers Book Club.
I was wondering if that was it.
And they had five in August, but just think about six, seven, and eight-year-olds
Oh, my goodness.
participating. So that's, that's great.
But they're pretty, that's the word. I have a granddaughter that's, great-granddaughter that's that age. And they can be pretty serious and
Yes.
and interested in different things. So depending upon the book, it would be a really good experience.
Yes.
And in fact, I might just let her mother know.
So that's new.
That was new, yes.
I sent to a school in Texas where we have a great-grandson going to first grade. And I sent several of the book lists that our librarians had developed. They were so pleased and they said to be sure to tell you thank you.
Okay.
Because they don't have the facilities or the background, you know, to do that. The library, I think, has one or two staff members for the whole town.
I'll share that with youth services.
Then that they were able, will be able to buy some of those books as a result of the list?
Yes. And the thing that was so neat was that they copied the lists and handed them out to everybody that had a library card.
Could buy the books too.
So the parents would know what to buy and what was recommended.
Who had a library card.
Oh.
So, you know, so it's spreading. And they were just delighted because they didn't have that, that information.
Yeah. Sherri, could you say something about the end of summer meet and greet with Oceanside, New York? And something else coming up with another Oceanside somewhere?
I, yes. That was really a success. I thought it was a really novel idea and everyone really enjoyed themselves. And Monica reported that the librarians from Oceanside, New York were just really a nice, engaging group. And so what's grown out of that is the Oceansides around the country to get together. So there is an Oceanside, Oregon, and I believe there's an Oceanside in Washington. And I know at least the Oceanside, Oregon and Oceanside, California, we're going to get together for something. I'm not sure when it is, but they are going to start connecting.
All right, good. So that hasn't been planned yet, but definitely want to stay
Yes.
on top of that. That's, that's great fun.
And that's, that's really neat because more than once I've put something in my computer and not been paying attention and suddenly realizing I'm talking to New York.
Yes, it happens quite regularly.
Right. Oops, they couldn't find my library card there.
Hey, thank you so much. Absolutely, please.
I was curious on 1E, the, what is? It is number nine. What is Graphic Novel Book Club?
Okay, so graphic novels, we would have called them comic books. But it is a phenomenon that has taken off. And there are ones written for kids, teens, and adults. And there is an adult graphic, graphic novel book club that meets once a month. And they read a graphic novel and discuss it. So it's more pictures than words, but it's, it is very, it is very popular. And we've joined the official book club that is sponsored by Comic-Con, which is the comic book
Cool.
event that happens once a year, so.
In San Diego, but it happens in other cities as well?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I believe that we have a coffee shop that has, that sells
Yes, panels, panels, coffee shop.
Next to the Mission Avenue Bar and Restaurant.
I, it just, I couldn't imagine what graphic meant, so. Thank you.
One of my granddaughters got a full semester's credit studying graphic novels.
Yeah.
She got English credit for it.
It's very popular.
Wasn't it the one we had with the Oceanside, not Oceanside, San Diego? Had a big event.
Yes.
Was it John Lewis's book?
That one was a graphic novel and the one for this year is one as well.
Yes, 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 that was excellent.
Adrienne is commenting on John Lewis's book, which was a graphic novel called March.
Yes, I was commenting on that.
Thank you.
And this, this San Diego book club for the, is the one by George Takei from the Starship Enterprise. And he talks about his life as a child during the Japanese internment of World War II. It's a whole new thing, Jack, and people are picking up on it. And I know my son started reading way back when via comic books, but now they're called graphic novels.
Yeah.
I think you and I would think graphic, like graphic, bad, bad things.
We, yeah, we attended the one, John Lewis, when that came out for March. And that was just great, yeah.
Just, it was just misleading and I wanted to make sure.
Well, thank you for asking because we all found out it's something new.
All right. So public comments being none?
Our usual crowd.
Okay. So we'll go to old business. Update on COVID-19 impacts of the library, item three.
Okay. So just to bring you up to date on our services that have been impacted and provided during the COVID. Of course, all of our online programming is continuing. We're going to continue with home delivery. We did curbside for the month of August with us reopening last week. We eliminated that last Friday. We were lunch sites and did visits there and took out craft kits. We've sent craft kits home. An E-card was developed so that people were able to register for library cards online, use it for online services, and now they'll be able to use them for in-person services. And so those were the things that, you know, we've done and maintained for the last six months. And some of those will continue even though we have reopened. But I'm just feeling like I need to keep you guys up to speed on, on what is being provided. So that's my report on that.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. Item four, continuing on update and reopening strategies.
Yes, so we have reopened. We reopened last Monday on the 14th. And I thought that you would appreciate seeing the reopening training packet that we put together. And the week before we reopened, we brought all of the staff back to the library on three different days and did two sessions a day. Chris Morales, CJ, Marie Towne, and myself, we did the training. It was about an hour and a half long. And then the staff was given jobs and tasks to help us get the building ready for reopening, just giving them a chance to be back in the building. Because, you know, several staff, many staff actually had really stayed at home, had not worked, had not been out in public very much. And so that's a lot emotionally, physically
Absolutely.
to come back. And so we wanted to just provide kind of a reentry. And so that's what we did. If you want to look at page 17 there, this kind of just summarizes what, what we are offering. So we did create an express library. We're calling it Grab and Go for the public. And the example I used, it's like running into 7-Eleven to get a Slurpee and a bag of chips. And so you know what you want, you're heading in there, you get it, and you head back out, not doing, you know, like your weekly grocery shopping or
Browsing.
browsing and that type of thing. So we are open Monday through Friday from 10 to 5. We do have limited capacity inside of both buildings. We're allowing 30 people in the Civic Center Library and 12 at the branch.
See that many?
And we've not reached, at least here at Civic, we've not reached that 30 capacity yet. So, but you know, we're only two days into the second week. It's designed for picking up your holds. There is browsing available. We're encouraging customers to be as self-service as possible, but there is still printing and faxing, scanning, copying. You can have a 30-minute session on the computers. There's no casual seating, no opportunity to charge your phone. The study rooms and the community rooms aren't available right now. We'll continue with virtual programming and home delivery. And they still do have some staff telecommuting, kind of coming in two days a week, staying home three the next week, in three days, staying home two, that type of thing. And then the Oceanside Reads Learning Center and the Bookmobiles remain closed. But Reads has really moved to a lot of virtual, Chelsea's doing a lot virtually with book clubs and just even group reading. And our Bookmobile staff are supporting the kids that really have a need for some adult help with getting onto their computer. And so they are at Chavez Resource Center and at Libby Lake, four mornings a week helping with that.
Four mornings, did you say?
Four mornings, yeah, 8:15 to 1:00. Four days a week, they're out there helping whatever the help is. If it's that you're having a connectivity issue or you're having an issue logging on or you just need, you know, a little adult supervision to stay in your seat and do what you need to do, they're there to help with that. So we've been able to continue supporting that. And we will try to do that as, as long as we possibly can. So this is our stage one reopening.
That's great. I have one question and a comment. Has the literacy group moved yet?
No.
Okay. And I really like having a greeter at the door of the library going in.
How many staff now do we have?
55 out of our 60, I think, maybe a little bit less.
We're almost.
Yeah, we've, as you, you'll see, as, if you've looked in your packet, we've had three, now actually four, that either decided not to return or since returning have decided to retire or quit. So we're down those four plus the other recruitment. So maybe we're more like at 53 of 60. So the schedule is working because of the 10 to 5 and just the Monday through Friday. And, but we need to fill some of those vacancies before we can expand that in any way.
Now, is that total for the system?
Yes.
I'd like to ask, when you talked about the Bookmobiles at the two centers, I think this touches on something that Bill raised at the last meeting. And that was, I should have him probably speak to himself, but the concern of many families that don't have access to Wi-Fi, et cetera. And am I understanding that that is something that is, can be provided, like at the two?
So there is Wi-Fi capabilities at the two resource centers that we're going to. And we're not taking the buses out there, we're just taking staff out there. My understanding is that Wi-Fi or Internet is available to any family in the Oceanside School District, providing they call Cox and work it out. And it's being offered for like $5 a month.
Yeah, I can't speak to it no longer being on the board, although I do know that we are bending over backwards as my daughter being a supervisor for Cox. But school districts have adapted to being able to provide that service throughout the state using school buses, moving them into strategic places. The problem is that the district doesn't meet the needs of all of the students in Oceanside because part of them are also Vista. And I don't know what Vista's doing at all. Well, I do know that Vista is working hard. They have quite a few volunteers now that are coming in trying to address some of these issues. I'm not sure where Oceanside is. I know they made an effort to get all the students' Chrome's, computers. And that was the first step because there were some students that didn't even have the equipment. I'm waiting to hear, there's supposed to have been a conversation that was taking place. I don't know if it did yet this week with Oceanside School District to find out what they're doing in this area of work. Yeah, so maybe we'll have more information coming. Okay, this is very critical. We know that there's quite a disparity that can exist.
Yeah.
I had a question about the items that you've shared here in terms of the reopening. Where do you get the guidance for making these decisions? And I'm not questioning that. I'm just asking in terms of, everybody's out there with the purple tier and the orange tier. And we're changing, you know, the expectations. And Wilma Wooton from the San Diego County Office downtown has been issuing the medical guidelines for when people can reopen and when they're locked down. So could you tell me a little bit or tell us a little bit about, for example, the decision for 30-minute sessions for public computers? The decision to have the number of people that you've identified? Is that from the city manager through the county? Or do you get it from other libraries? Do you understand my question?
Yes, I do.
Like, how did you come to these decisions?
Okay. So the California State Library prepared a 29-page paper on reopening in-person guidelines. And we looked at that. We had already put these staged reopenings in place ourselves just based on our own reading and what we thought, where we thought we fell either among retail or museums, that type of thing. So that was all done back in April. In early May, then the California State Library came out with their report. And as a library, we felt like, wow, you know, we did pretty good. We're, we're pretty close here. And the problem at that time was that nowhere within the state or the county were libraries mentioned as being part of any of the tiered reopenings. So we just waited. And so then in, I don't even remember the date now. Either the August, when we went to the colored tiers, libraries were finally mentioned in the state plan. And we were able to move rather quickly because we already had our plan in place.
Okay.
So it's a combination of what the state library had put together. And they had done a combination of retail and museums. And then just looking at what the health order said, we're, if you use what the county put in place as far as numbers of what could be allowed in the building, we're, we are well below what it should be. But we also looked at our space as a resource, our computers are a resource, our staff is a resource, and what can we manage? And I would rather start like we did, very small and tight, and be able to loosen it up than to say, oh, we can let 100 people in and then go, oh, we really made a big mistake. So we can, we're in a place where we can expand those things as we see fit. Some of it was, we wanted to really see, well, what is the need of our customers as they're coming in? So we're, we're trying to, as best we can, follow all of the guidelines, listening to everything. Of course, we were waiting today to make sure that we're staying in the red tier, which
Exactly.
the county is, so that there wouldn't be any more rollbacks. And then just getting permission from the city manager to move forward. And she's looking to us to be the ones with, you know, the knowledge about libraries and that type of thing. So, and then I have been in contact with my colleagues among the other city and county library systems. And we're all kind of doing a little bit, something different. But in a lot of ways, it's, it's very, it's very similar. So that's, does that answer your question?
Perfect. And it sounds like you have some flexibility that if it seems like things are going well and there's not a huge demand, you could possibly increase
Yes.
the ceiling on the number of people. I was particularly interested in the 30-minute limitation on the computers because for a lot of folks, it takes them 30 minutes to get on.
I understand. And we have the capacity to continue the six feet of social distancing. 10 computers upstairs in Civic Center would be our limit.
Okay.
So we could add five more. But we're also not seeing a great, you know, we were anticipating lines outside and, you know, people having to queue up to wait for the computers. And that's not happened yet. So we're, as senior managers, we met last Wednesday, two days after we opened, to, you know, kind of evaluate, decided we're not changing anything. We're meeting again this Friday. We'll make a decision, you know, do we, can we add, add the five more computers? Or do we just add more time?
Right.
Do we, can we manage, you know, another 10 people in the building? What? What, so we're, we have the flexibility to do what we feel is best within the stages at this point.
As I sat outside today for a couple of hours registering voters, I noticed that there was not a steady stream of people coming in. I fully expected to see the homeless folks. So apparently, they found somewhere else to charge their cellphones in the interim, instead of coming to the library or making use of the computers.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And also, Sherri, I just want to be clear too. With respect to the county's order, is, am I understanding that libraries still are not actually mentioned as any kind of entity in that? You said libraries had not actually been mentioned in terms of guidelines specifically?
They've been.
But I understood how you.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
They've been mentioned at the state level. And the county did not restrict that, so then making it okay.
Okay, yeah, 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 yes. But still, I'm just curious, but nothing specifically? You had not included any group in the county?
Not that I've seen.
Okay, great.
Sherri, I read somewhere that they're using sheets to cover the keyboards, and then you throw them away?
Yes, so we have, if you look, so if you think about, if you still get a newspaper in person at your house, and on the rainy days, it gets thrown in one of those plastic, that's what the keyboard covers look like. So we're, we're, so you have two choices. You can slip one of those keyboard covers on and use it, or you can use a Clorox cleanup and wipe your keyboard down before you use it and after you use it. So we're, you know, leaving some of that to the customer. If the customer comes up, uses it, and doesn't disinfect it, then we will, before the next person comes along.
That's, I sort of wondered how you worked it into the procedure.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, and we will have an update on the racial equity statement.
Okay.
Number five.
So I did have an opportunity last month to watch the meeting, and I do apologize that I couldn't be here, there wasn't anything that I could do about that. And, but I'm glad now to be able to hopefully give you a little bit of an update and help you all understand where this came from and where we're going with it. So the CREI, as we are calling it, C-R-E-I, it was a grant. It was a grant opportunity that Monica Chapademerk found last October, and brought to me and said, I really think that we should apply for this. And so I agreed, and we did receive it. And what it provided was $5,000 for travel and lodging expenses for between two and five staff members to attend in-person training. So we picked a team of three, of Monica, Brad, and Jenna Leese. And the grant was sponsored by the California State Library, and it was also funded through the LSTA, which is the Library Services Technology Act, which is federal funds. So that's where the funding for it came. The purpose of the workshops were to create a statewide network of libraries and library staff committed to racial equality and inclusion for all, to create a group that could share information, deepen conversations, and take action to grow racial equity in library service deliveries. So it really was a great training. They were able to do two of them in person. The training was provided by Government Alliance on Racial Equity. And it was, I looked at some of the PowerPoints from their days of training, and it really was intense. A lot of it was just a lot of conversations, a lot of thinking through different aspects of this, talking about implicit bias, and that we all have some biases, whether we know it or not, and whether we share them or not, or act on them. And just really the idea of having an opportunity to think about this very important topic and issue. And so part of what was agreed upon, we had to sign an agreement going into this, that the work product of that would be the racial equity statement, which they have completed that, and also then a work plan. And our plans had been that when we had Staff Development Day last April, which we didn't get to have, that the focus of that training would have been to take the staff through this implicit bias training. And we were not able to do that. So we've had to kind of readjust a little bit. And so what we are doing this fall is that we've selected three books. And staff have been encouraged to choose a book on the topic of race, and read that, and then they will be put into a book club and have an opportunity to discuss. And just like any book club, I mean, there will be an opportunity, did you like the book? Didn't you like the book? What did you like the book? You know, what bugged you about the book? What, you know, what made you think, those type of things? So that's the point that we're at, that the books have been distributed to the majority of the staff. And we are reading or listening to that and getting prepared for the book club. Then last month, we presented you with the racial equity statement, which you approved, and I thank you for that. And I did then send that on to the city attorney's office for review. And he came back with a comment on one of the statement, on the first bullet point statement there. Let me find. Where we said eliminating racial barriers in service and practices. And he pointed out that there better not be any barriers in service and practices, or we are in legal trouble. And so he asked us to reword that because, thinking that, really, his thought process was, the barriers that we have are probably more social, economic than they are based on race. So that statement was reworded, and we kind of rearranged things within the bullet points there. And so that third bullet point now, that says ensuring that library services, policies, and procedures do not negatively impact communities of color, is what we have changed that to. So our statement is good to go. The city manager's office and my boss, the assistant city manager, is aware that we have done this work, and we are fine with having a statement when the rest of the city does not. And then I have also.
They always lead the way, anyway.
We lead the way. People can copy us if that's what they would like to do. And then I have also just informed the, you know, the HR director what we're doing. And because one of, at least one of the areas, if we want staff to reflect the community, then there's work at the HR level that is going to need to take place. And so this, you know, we can't just, like, jump off the cliff. It's step by step. But he's aware of our statement and the work that we're doing with our book clubs and with our own staff. And he shared with me that, you know, he is hoping to put some kind of small working group together in the next few months to start to address. And that makes me happy, the word "start" makes me happy. Let's start to address this. It's not just continue to say, well, we really need to do this. Let's start somewhere. So that's what we're doing. That was our intention all along when we started this whole process back in October, when we applied for the grant, that we want to be part of the change. That, and change takes time, and change is hard and uncomfortable sometimes. But we need to start, so that's where we're at.
Can we have the list of the books that you had, gave them a choice of?
I know that one of them is, So You Want to Talk About Race. That's the one I'm reading. There's one called, what's the one you have, Stamped? Then there's one called Stamped, and I can't remember the third title. But I will find out that one and send it to you.
Great.
I was working with a small group of little people. And we, I used the phrase, because we'd just been doing this, people of color. And one of the children said something that I think should be on walls everywhere. He said, but we all have a color.
Yep.
And I thought that was the best answer I'd ever heard.
Yeah.
So I've heard that, yeah, before. It's nice to hear it come from a little one, before they are taught to become conscious of color.
That's right.
He had, he couldn't, he had no idea what we were talking about.
Isn't that wonderful?
Well, we want them to be able to be conscious, rather, but not to have any other, I will say, moral derogatives associated.
Sherri, thank you very much for the follow-up information, because I was quite interested in that. Tell me, you've explained about the training and the book clubs, and yes, you'll give us the names of the three books, that would be great and good to know. In terms of the next steps, you've given a good explanation of kind of a trainer or trainers model in terms of getting the three people to help out with the rest of the staff members. In terms of the five bullets, is there any plan to take those five bullets and translate them into performance objectives that are measurable? I'm not trying to get too fancy here, but, you know, you've come up with five goals.
Or the strategic plan.
Yes. We are committed that there will be a piece of our strategic plan that addresses these, this whole project in general, and then specifically, you know, action items to go with it moving forward for the, in the next three years.
Not to take you off track, but could I request that perhaps from HR, you could find out what the racial distribution of the 60 people that work for the library is currently? Because as of 2019, in the census, 83% of librarians were white. Most of them are female. And 68% of staff members, such as technicians or assistants, I'm reading from the notes that I took here, are identified as white or non-Hispanic. And so given the fact that the US is 83 and 68, I was just wondering if we could compare and contrast what the current status of our.
I mean, we're better than that.
Pardon me?
I think we're better than those figures.
Sure, sure, sure. So it's just a starting point to look at the fifth bullet, and to come up with some demographics to compare and contrast with.
But then you'd have a documented baseline, too.
Sure.
Good, yeah, good point. Thank you.
Okay, if you want to move to item six, please, the trustee work plan. And thank you for filling in what we've done in the past quarters.
We had all those blanks.
Pardon me?
We had all those blanks last month.
Well, we had done it, but we hadn't been able to record it, yes.
Exactly.
Okay, how do you want to proceed here? Do you want to actually go step by step? Now you have the information, you've had a chance to read it? Or would you just like to, let me ask this. Are there anything, any items under task that you would like to speak to?
We've just done number two.
Pardon me?
We've just done number two. I mean, we just discussed a part of it.
I thought, and I refresh my memory, I thought we had some discussion on that item two, that we wanted to include Samoyeds?
Well, we've got Pacific Islanders.
We're running out of room, it may be under Pacific Islanders.
Yeah.
Remember the discussion? We could check back on that.
I will.
Okay, I guess that's, recognize the efforts of teen volunteers during, there's a lot of teen work that's being done. I don't know if you want to actually mention it, but it certainly is responsive to item three.
So, you know, I will mention there that, just for your edification, that an invitation is always open to the teens to address the board. There's a place on the agenda for the, if a teen partner wanted to come and share anything. We routinely ask that, you know, Amy, every month. And they're probably either A, busy, B, shy, who knows? I think that the significant pieces, though, is that they are active as a group with Amy, whether it's on Zoom, in person, whatever's going on. There is an active teen advisory board. They are making suggestions for programming and things that they want. And Amy is providing what they want. So I think that that's the important thing. I think it is important that that remain there, and that you continue to ask, or we continue to report out on it. And I think the other thing that's exciting, and, well, the Teen Works Program, the grant, obviously has to be an outgrowth of this work that she's doing with the teens, and that she, she and Marie and others were seeing, hey, these kids really need some of these skills. Let's do something about it. So it is an important thing, and just because they don't come and report doesn't mean that you shouldn't continue to ask about it.
Well, I had here to speak on the tech, the teen interns and that grant. So I really commend Amy and the group for doing that. I also know that since we just launched our Global Ambassador's Mentoring Program with the North County African-American women's, we just finished our 10th week. And I do know that two of those young ladies have applied for internships.
Oh, good. Well done.
Yeah, well, they actually applied on their own before this, so I was, I just, so I sat and talked with Amy today.
Doesn't mean that you can't take credit, though, Alma.
No, I'm not taking any credit.
Oh, that was good, though.
But I talked with Amy, I had a meeting with her just before we came in here. And you're right, she, even for homework helpers, she has teens doing work on the homework helpers. So it's really quite incredible. And so that just leads to one other note, that I'm always saying, that we need to get more publicity about the work that's being done here.
So I know that advertisement for that was huge on social media. It was sent out through the city's website and the library's website to advertise the internship program. So, and for that age group, that's the perfect place for that to be happening.
Yes, that's good to get them. And then once we get them, I want it noted in the Union Tribune.
Because the old fogies read that. Let's see if we can get the first four on board, and then.
You didn't have to say it.
Absolutely. So every time I get only the Sunday paper looking for the local news, I go right away to that section and look for Oceanside, so.
That's right.
Okay, anything else?
The rest of the world exists.
Support lifelong learning through universal access to information. Number four, I just was wondering, I don't know anything special that we've done in terms of status, lifelong learning.
Well, when you look at the, what is it, the Mango?
Yes.
And the Hoopla?
Yeah. The numbers there, they've gone way up. Bob and I were talking about it last night, that the Mango numbers. Obviously, some of the people stuck at home have decided to learn another language.
Yes.
It's great.
And there's another database that became available to us. And I didn't connect all the dots to me. We need to get the info on that. But we also are participating in Corsica right now, which is a certification program at different levels. So I'll get you some numbers next month on that and how that's going. It was kind of a short-term opportunity, but we should still, we should still look at that.
So I think we should note that.
Okay.
That we, please, having looked at the mango and the hoopla, very important. And then your Corsica.
Okay.
Okay. I just don't know whether it would fit here or not. But in terms of number five, I was just amazed from the August report of all the training that was done. And some of that, the technology training that was done, it was really incredible. So I just have to make a note of that. Since it was COVID, you weren't sitting idle. It was, it was an enormous, we had three or four, almost three, four pages of training that staff had been.
That was really impressive, wasn't it?
It was, very, very impressive. Anything else?
So Alma, that actually fits under.
Probably better.
Library-specific tasks, number eight. Ensure that there's opportunities for professional development and training of staff. And so that would actually go there on page four.
The same thing, outstanding staff training. Okay. During COVID. All right, anything else?
Well, some of the things, you know, you do review on a monthly basis just through the way we have the different statistical reports set up. So I would say in the partnership there under number six, just as we continue with Set Up to Succeed, we're going to be doing some internship work with Maricosta College. Then the internship grant for the teens. And we continue to be hopeful with some interns with Cal State San Marcos and others. But just those educational partnerships have been very important and continue to be.
And I'm looking forward to actually where we'll, I know, have some discussions hopefully with Alma and doing something more in terms of a community outreach for Black History Month. Some of those discussions are just happening.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else that anyone wanted to carry forward? I underbored specific task I had done, done a lot. Number one. Note this, I think we attend as needed.
Yes.
Two, I have, we've done that, annual review. And the quarterly review of the trustee is in progress. Annual review feedback from the library director's valuation. We will talk about that later until that's done. Observe the strategic plan. 2020, 2023. We will be seeing that, right?
Yes.
Turn over the library service during COVID and hours. I didn't have anything else. Oh, I'm sorry, I did. On number four, I thought this, when someone was just talking about the old folks, not that I would necessarily categorize myself in that group, but.
Watch it.
But I think I had a brief conversation with CJ saying that I thought this might be a great opportunity for the library to go back to doing some training in some of the kind of program, computer program formats, like Google or Instagram. I am amazed at how much Instagram communications are coming across, when at one time I thought that was primarily just to share pictures. And now it's just turning into a whole new platform. And she thought that was really a good idea. So I just, I kind of had it there. I thought maybe it might be something that you could look into.
Okay.
Especially with Zoom. And speaking of that, and you mentioned the Reeds. Chelsea has done a fabulous job. And Zoom is one of the areas that she actually spent quite a bit of time working with the tutors to get them up to speed on too. So should be congratulated.
And we actually had a volunteer that did one-on-one training with several of the Friends Board members and then made it possible for them to meet last month via Zoom. And it went very well.
Good.
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 You know, when I was first asked if I could go to a Zoom meeting, I thought, you know, I could probably spell it, but that's all I knew. And actually, my son came up and taught me how to do it. Because at that point, I couldn't find any place to learn how to Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, it's actually even quite good online, on Zoom itself. They actually have a training component.
Yeah, now it's much better. At that point, I couldn't find anything.
Yeah.
So there, under number three, I think we could put in that there will be, later on the agenda, there's an update to the review schedule for the biennial review of the library policies and procedures. So you'll be approving that a little bit later in this meeting.
Yes, and at one place, we say biannual here and there.
Yes. I just saw that. I'll fix that.
It's biennial.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And then promote staff and community involvement in program development, expansion of services. I thought the, I mentioned this, I don't know if this is a place, the Oceanside Spectrum, work that CJ has been doing there is outstanding.
She's becoming a star.
Yes.
It's very, very good.
And she's getting more and more comfortable in front of the camera, which is really a delight to see.
A lot of growth.
I loved this last month, as she introduced herself, that she's Oceanside's librarian. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I've really encouraged her to, to do that. If, you know, if she's enjoying it and if it's working out, and I just think she's a natural at it, so I'm happy to encourage her.
In the library, this, before the meeting, so.
I told her today that we're going to call her CJ the DJ. Because she seemed so comfortable in making those presentations. And that's not a skill that everybody has.
No, not at all.
And I was even looking at, you know, it's one thing, as you say, presentations. But there were a couple of times when you heard, you could see she was listening because she was taking in from her reaction to what was, you know, being said. And really, it was, she was impacted by something was being said. It was very good.
And then she connects them to somebody else that's got some similar thing, which is really fun to see. But I think the work that she's done with the cultural arts district.
Yes.
Got her in front of the camera to begin with.
Yeah.
And that really helped a lot. I'm excited for that to get more visible as well.
So I'm looking at number seven. And then I think we can say that we support the reopening, really. Is this initiated, support marketing efforts that promote the public image of? I was thinking of the, you know, you did all the reopening, item four.
So you need a vote on item seven? Do you need a vote?
Oh, no.
No.
No, I was just saying, in the third quarter that we're reviewing, I just was saying that I thought, to me, item four seemed to connect with that.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought it was well done, the reopening. And then item seven, eight, we've already mentioned about the staff, that I'm on a staff training.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do we have a pot of money that we're working on building so that we can get on the north side of Coast Highway, Oceanside Library, on the big white slate that's there? That nobody knows what that big building is until they drive past it?
So that, yes, it would take a pot of money that, if you've got the pot of money. There's other work that has to happen there because there's several things. Because there are signage restrictions because we're part of the downtown. So it's just a matter of moving that project from a back burner to a front burner. And, and so we do have some money in the CIP budget that we will be using to refresh and change the story corner here in the Civic Center Library and to also see what we possibly can do in the courtyard area. And it is designated as, you know, library, it's not renovation, but. So depending on what might be left in that when we're finished with those things and that we can, you know, get through all of the different processes and we could work towards some signage on that side of the building.
Well, the Library Foundation actually discussed this, I think, in February. February, March? I don't know. Anyway, and we really were talking just the same way. And we were told the city had all of these stoppages that we would have to change before we could do it. So we have discussed it. It was seriously discussed and members were interested.
Well, not only, excuse me.
What I'm saying is that's a financial source.
So it is, it is something, I'm sorry, it is something that is, it is an unfunded project on the CIP list.
Because I was going to say, we talked about this last year.
And so it is, it is there. It just doesn't have funds associated with it. And part of it just has been our bandwidth to have the time to investigate it.
Okay. Now, the last time we talked about it, it was at the point that we were beginning to put some signage around here inside and put the signs up.
We did signage inside the building.
So I'm going to ask now, is it possible that we could determine how much it would cost from whoever we've worked with in the past? Would it be possible to determine what it would cost? Maybe that might also encourage some movement.
I will find out because we are going to ask that company to cost out some of the signage that we need for the new Reeds facility. So I could have Monica ask him. It just, it's such a fine line because you don't, you don't want to get too far down the road with the person where they've put a lot of time and effort into something that's cost them money. And then.
I understand.
You know, so.
But they've been around, they've been around the barn enough times to give you a sense of what an estimate even would be.
Okay, I will work with Monica to get him to do that for the Coast Highway side.
Yeah. And my concern is that, I remember hearing people talk about, there were parents on the art walks that we were doing that didn't realize that it was a library, but they found out because their kids were dragging them in as a result of the partnership between the museum and the children's librarian department, so.
Okay.
And it's a free library and not, you know, I assumed all libraries were free because I was raised in California. But people that are from the South or other places think there's a charge as well. So there's a segment of our population that are non-natives who don't know that much about our library. And I'm not sure that we have made every effort that we could to reach them.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Anything else? So I don't, do we need any particular action on this? No?
No.
Thank you. All right, item seven, approval of proposed holiday closures.
I move acceptance.
Gee, all of these, I hope we're open a lot.
Okay, all facilities, yeah, I do see that. All right, it's been moved?
Yes.
Do we have a second? And second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question? Do we have a question?
I do.
Yes.
If I might. When I see the closures, I see Mission Branch closed or all facilities closed. What does that mean for like?
The Civic Center?
Memorial Day? Easter?
The Branch Library is opened on Sundays and the Civic Center Library is not. So where you only see Mission Branch closed, it's in relationship to a Sunday.
So they are generally open?
Yes. But generally open on Sundays. So if we're going to do a holiday closure on a Sunday, it just affects the Mission Branch.
Because we are already closed here on Sunday. But all facilities closed then are referring, there wouldn't be on a Sunday. That's not mentioned on a Sunday. Yeah. Question?
I did wonder if there, I've only been there once or twice on a Sunday, I think. I was just curious as to whether the, what their attendance is like on Sundays.
It's busy.
Is it?
I've been there on Sundays, it's busy.
No, it can be really busy.
Okay. I thought it was busy, but.
Okay. Moved in second, any other discussion? Hearing none? Move for approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you. And number eight. Item eight, consideration of revised timeline for the biennial policy review.
Yes. So this is a memo that I brought to you, I think, in January or February. And we were all set to be just about done at this time. And then.
We got slammed.
This is the, this is the work that COVID hit here. So in an effort to not drag it out for another year because it is important to stay on top of this or it does tend to get to be a little too much. So I am proposing the changes that I've listed here that during October, November, and January, we get these different parts of the policy reviewed. And most of the time, the staff reviewers are myself, Brad and CJ. When it comes to circulation, then Sam and Jorge will be weighing in. And the collection policy, Marie and Monica would be weighing in. And also by, for example, pushing circulation to January, as we're talking through the strategic planning process, if there was going to be changes to circulation policy that we know is going to be brought forward in the strategic plan, then that we can make those changes and be, to be part of these revisions. And then you would just, so I bring it to you in pieces, like I've done in the past, and redlined and red wording the things that we're changing. And then we would approve the whole thing.
When it's done.
You make it easy for us. Good.
Okay, so like in October, what is this? Where are we, September?
We're September.
Okay, so October, there will be three.
Yes.
Yeah. And then November, there'd be two.
Yes.
Three. Three, yeah.
Oh, and that's so much better, thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Good.
All right. Thank you so much for the consideration. Greatly appreciate it. And we are.
And Bill will get in on all of it. You do need to approve that, that's an approval item.
Just looking for that. Just looking for that. So so I need a move, a motion, please, to accept.
No, that was just recommendation.
I thought I said I need approval. Board to approve.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Your turn.
It doesn't say anything about a move for approval, so if you need a motion.
Right, move, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Geez.
It's really your turn, Bill.
I'm sorry. I dozed off.
When we go to the library board meeting, you'll be close enough to be kicked.
And then we are at number nine. Oceanside Reed's literacy grant program, program grant, rather, excuse me.
I move we accept all our money.
A second. What are they going to do with this, boss?
Well, they have it listed there. Yeah.
That's lovely.
Forty-four, is it? All right, cool. I wonder if it was paying for their move.
Of course, the adult literacy family, uh, literacy programs that they've been working on.
So is this the state funding?
Yes.
Yeah, it says state.
All right. I just thought I needed clarification, so.
Okay, forty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Okay.
A motion to accept.
We move approval, unanimous approval.
First?
I was first, she's second.
All right.
And Bill's voting yes.
Okay, we did it.
I accept. All right.
Anybody who doesn't approve it gets thrown off the board.
All right, layers on reports. Looks like we don't have any except for friends or the friends of the library.
No, hasn't.
Sherry's, anything you want to?
Yes, I'll just share a few things because it had been several months since the friends had an opportunity to meet, so they did meet on September 8th. As I mentioned, they met via Zoom. Everything functioned really well for them. The treasurer brought reports from March through August and shared those with the board. Also on that agenda was getting them updated on audits or what they're going to move forward calling financial reviews. And so those have been done for previous years. I think there was about ten years worth that needed to be done and so you can thank the offices of Sherry and Sherry. We did the audits.
Ten years?
It's a partnership, huh?
We did financial reviews for them and got, got things caught up and then they're going to move forward with possibly making a change to their bylaws to call it a financial review, not an audit where you're spending a lot of money and and all of that. So there, I, I will say very much have an appreciation for the treasurer and the work that the treasurers have done and that, you know, once we figured out, you know, kind of what we were doing, it all went really well.
It's gotten more and more involved over the years with the amount of money they've been making.
Yes. So then Joe Rittenhouse, who is one of the board members, is the new membership chair. And the friends are looking to find a database for their membership work that just offers them a little bit more than what they've had in the past. And so there's a subcommittee working on that. Then they are starting to really look for a new sorting storage facility and working towards cleaning out six oh two because a new fire station will start to be built there sometime in the spring of 2021. So they are working on that. One of the things that's helping is their buy the book, buy the box, book sale and first couple of weeks brought in about $2,000 for that, so they're quite happy. They are working on some creative fundraising ideas and I look forward to hearing some of the things that they're going to focus on and bring back to the board at their October meeting. And then I gave them an update on how the library spends their, the donations or the money that they give to us, both in general and what we did with it during COVID. And then Joe McCluskey, he was appointed as the public relations chairman and has already come up with several really creative ideas to help them celebrate their 50th anniversary, which will be in 2021. So we want to make a big deal with that. And then the next seagull covering November and December is in the works.
Sherry, has there been a change in the, in the membership of the board?
They brought on Joe McCluskey, has joined recently. Hillary, and I can't pronounce her last name, but a lady named Hillary, and then also Donna Locke. So they've brought on three new board members at their February meeting.
So could we have a, a new list of their?
She'll send that.
Roster? You, you've sent rosters, right? Yes.
She'll send it.
You should, we can resend it if you don't.
The one we've got is the correct one then?
Yes.
That's what I was asking.
I'll call you anyway if I need it.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, it's embarrassing when you don't realize.
Very good, thank you. All right, library director's report.
Okay. So briefly, I'll just share as far as projects. The Story Corner Refresh and the Hub project, we have a designer selected. She should be starting some work on that on Monday. And so we've got the Story Corner Refresh. And then she's also going to provide the design work for the Early Learning Hub. So that it'll be, you know, kind of, there'll be some continuity to the way that things are looking inside Civic Center Library. Then the and so then the Story Corner funding is through the CIP and the Hub is, is grant funded. And then I put in your packet for your consideration and review just the list of the current grants that we have received for this fiscal year. It totals $267,000 and then three other grants that we've either applied for or will be applying for during this fiscal year. The lunch, the number C there, lunch at the library, the fall support. We know that we're going to get $500 per site. What we haven't figured out yet is how many sites we can support.
Last I heard, I thought, I know you're looking at like four? Yeah, that's great.
So that would be, you know, around $2,000, so.
Where's that, yeah, where's that coming from?
That is coming through the California Library Association. And it, and through the, the state, the state library as well.
California.
So the California State Library provides the funds and then the California Library Association and and another organization work together to distribute the money.
Very good. Yes, this is what I'm talking about right here is that the grants that have been brought in to do this extra work. It's really commendable.
Yes, it is.
So as far as upcoming events, one of the things that, because of COVID, we've really made a decision not to put a lot of flyers out because then, you know, you touch the flyer and then you put the flyer back and then someone else touches the flyer and puts it back. And so what we've created is these QR codes and these are posted all over the library. And all you have to do is just scan it with your phone and then the flyer pops up. So it's very techie, but I made it work, so I'm sure, you know, if you've got a smartphone, if you've got a smartphone, you got it made. And so then what pops up is something that looks like this. So we're still creating the flyers, we're just not printing them and, and putting them out. But I've been wanting to do QR codes for so long, so I am so happy to see those.
You just got an app for it, for your phone.
Actually, you just, if you, like your camera?
Yeah.
And you scan your camera, your camera scans it and then it just opens.
Great.
It opens it like on, in your search engine, whether it's Safari or Google or whatever it is, so. Anyway, so very exciting.
I have it on the back of my, I mean, my phone, I have an app for it.
Okay.
All right.
So then as far as facilities, as I mentioned probably back in May, CJ and Brad are representing the library on the general, the city's general plan update on the community facilities element. And we do have a current facilities element for the library and it's old. And so we're working towards doing some of the updating on that. I figure at the October meeting, I can, we'll bring some kind of an update to you on that. Anything that we would want to change or add would need your approval and so we will keep you involved in that as we move forward. Reed's will be moving. We will be the occupant by the first of October and are hoping to be out of our current space around, by the 16th. We won't be like unpacked and moved in, but we'll be out of one space and into the other. So they did a walkthrough today, got IT in there to determine what those needs are going to be and, and things like that. And then we do have a request for proposal that's just about ready to go out to get a consultant on board for the space in the courtyard to see what would be our options of kind of activating that space as community space, library space, that type of thing. So I'll keep you posted on that. Then in your packet, you have your staff and staff development info, training report. And hot off the press today, a letter. Dear Splash, you're a great mascot. Wish I could meet you someday. I'm collecting autographs from mascots all over the world. If you could send me yours, that would be awesome. I hope you're doing well. Have a nice day. Love, Ramsey. P.S. My favorite books are Junie B. Jones, Captain Underpants, Wonder and Bad Kitty.
Oh, that's neat. Is it the last thing you said? Is it old?
I don't think, no, it didn't. And he's from Little Rock, Arkansas. So we've got to get Splash's autograph set up and send it to him.
Interesting.
So. That's my public relations report for the day.
That's wonderful.
Did anybody ever ask Splash if we could write?
Put some glue down and put some sand on it.
That's a great idea. Yeah, we needed to decide if it's going to be a stamp or what, what it's going to be, so we'll get that worked out.
Let us know.
Okay.
Did we, we talked recently that we needed a new splash? Did that get?
It's, it's in the works. You know, we just needed, the friends have committed to paying for it. It's just, we wanted to make sure that they had the actual funds to do it and so we'll move, we'll move forward with that.
Good.
As time permits, so anyway, that's my report.
Wow.
Very good.
Welcome back.
Very good, thank you. We're retired all this time.
Oh geez, no.
Are there any other, are there any announcements to be made on either the board? Have a city council member or?
As far as, we're, we're still in the red tier, which Sherry alluded to. They're going to give us two more weeks if we're real good, which is we're it's like my grandchildren can make a game out of, they, they play with a, a ball and it can be a different game 20 different times. And that's kind of how I, I put this together in my mind that if we're just perfect, we'll be able to play the game, but I mean, this, the, this guy is playing just like my grandkids do. They play a different game every time they go to a press conference. And so some of the discussion I'm sure is going to be around San Diego State and the COVID because our numbers are way down. Our, our city is probably among the cities. We're about ninth, but we're the least wealthiest city of the nine below us. So we are competing well against all, all the cities in the county that are that are certainly worse and have you know, they have complicated ways of having to deal with this. Our, I wanted to just say that we are our, our restaurants, our businesses are doing okay, but they won't be okay one more time. One more time and, and many businesses that you know throughout this city will be out of business, so. I, I would just hope that between that and, and I'm, I'm here, I've heard from about six churches that Taka suicide, all those kinds of things are really becoming more and more prevalent at home for people that have children at home and for people that are facing the the choice of having to take care of their kids at home or work and, and so the, the parents are struggling, the children are struggling, the, they don't know what to do, they this is a terrible thing and we're doing very well as far as a city. I, the, the school district, I really needs to get back to school as well, so. That's really all I have. We have a meeting tomorrow night, pretty short meeting. And I did.
Who's the we? I'm sorry. You said we have.
City Council.
The council, yeah.
I, I will be kind of scarce around here for the next couple of weeks in various form. My mother passed away and we're going to be celebrating her life here, kind of through this weekend. Combined with my family that is coming down here because the my 34 can't go up there to Roseville or actually Grass Valley is where she's going to be buried. And then we'll go up there, some of us will go up there for the actual funeral. So I, I just, unfortunately, I'm missing some things that are you know, when you have five members of this city council all running for something. It's just stupid, so anyway, thank you.
Sorry to hear about your loss.
Yes, condolences. All right, anything else? No? Hearing none, I will say we are adjourned. Adjourned? Thank you.